Seven o'clock, everybody, and thank you for coming out this evening. Full council meeting this evening on Wednesday, the 2nd of February 2022. Number one on the agenda is apologies.
We have apologies from councillors Young, Knight and Crittenden, who are well. Councillor Heatherington, who has an urgent work commitment, and councillor Alba, who has a personal commitment.
Thank you. Yes.
Chair, good evening. Thank you. I just raise a slight point of order, if I may, please, Chair. Traditionally, this meeting every year is the budget meeting. And the only items on the agenda are concerned with the budget. And one of the reasons for that is it allows the public to have a really good listen to us as we discuss the budget, which the signal is hidden in a 15 item agenda and is not likely to get the same degree of attention that it would. So I'm just wondering if this was possibly an accidental oversight or if this might be the way the council intends to go in the future regarding the budget meeting. And the other issue I had with it, with respect, please, is that the budget meeting is not a meeting for bringing motions and resolutions and things to council because it is the budget meeting. Therefore, someone like me who was expecting a budget meeting and didn't know this wasn't a budget meeting until the agenda had been published has been, in fact, disenfranchised for bringing any points for discussion or motions to the council. So I'm not expecting an answer instantly, but can I just have it recorded that I've raised that as an issue? It may have been that I wanted something to discuss but didn't because this should be the budget meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
If anyone can you'd like to...
Thank you, councillor Piper. I have not been aware that historically this meeting had been a one agenda item meeting. I was aware that the budget had, that the budget needed to be addressed at this, but address the agenda as this is a full council meeting and it's an opportunity for full council to consider matters that have been building up for full council. So in the future, we could return to having just the budget to be discussed and then possibly at not too late a date, another, another council meeting with other items that have built up.
Thank you, town clerk. Thank you, Chair. It's just really... Sentence has gone out of my head now. Thank you. Thank you for that. Just depends which way the council decides to go in the future. It's advertised on our webpage today as the budget meeting and people will have certain expectations about it all. I don't mind which way it goes, as long as we know.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Piper. I think it's something that we can decide as a council at a later date, so thank you for that. Okay. Item number two is declarations of interest. Are there any, please? Yes, councillor Wing.
I think I have to declare an interest on the item to do with Spencer Square.
Okay.
Because I've been involved in some of the negotiations with the leaseholder.
Thank you.
I'll fill a forming.
Item three is public participation, public speak.
Have there been any?
That's that then. Okay. Three point two, reports from the district councillors on matters directly related to Ramsgate. And this is where I warmly welcome our dis- well, it's not district councillor, it's district councillors, beg your pardon, I'm jumping ahead of myself. Were there any district councillors wanting to speak?
Mum, that, no reports received in advance this time.
Yes, thank you.
Again, Chair, no report prepared because I didn't know about it until the agenda appeared.
Okay, thank you. This is where I warmly welcome our county councillor. Thank you councillor Shonk for turning up. This is a report from county councillors on matters directly related to Ramsgate. Welcome, the applause is yours. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all you can do for us and thank you for talking back to me, but I do try to put around the matter. So what I've been trying to do, because the KCC at the moment, so many people stuck at home, working at home. My hardest years I've had, I've been there before, but what I do try and do is highlight this footpath. And I get kicked from one place to the other, TDC into KCC. Tree management, KCC. At that moment, I'm going to KCC member grants, going to spend my money in the main street, the maintenance for community trust, which is in Glenrodes. Not because I know where our work works there, but because they did some good jobs. We homeless including offenders, they want some new equipment. Other managers will probably be going to Clunville, the Seacodets, Warrnambool, British Legion. And maybe some new signage for no drinking and dog filter litter all around Ramsgate. I walked Newton many occasions, then to Ramsgate, where the lodens, all those lights don't work. I couldn't even tell you what the code number was, so I had to be all patrician cut back.
Tell me, tell me.
Money, and that's on my road up to Ramsgate Station. I don't know whether, if there's a paper taken this, as KCC, I do get quite a few emails from other people and I do try to respond. And I don't want to say I'm on anybody's books here, but as we know, there was a person killed in Montefiore Road on the push bike. This is, I do feel it's a bit of a KCC, but if that local councillor wants to highlight that matter, I'll take that to KCC. Yes.
Well, it was done to my driver, not much.
Well, at the top of Montefiore Road, seen a person across the road and in a road newsstand. Did come out Montefiore Road.
Okay, but what we, I took it all back.
Lucky evening because he had a third channel, I think he kept on that at the night.
Right, okay. But I'm waiting for the police report. And when they receive that, we asked them to come down because the resident, we had a meeting with residents who are concerned, first of all, about sightlines coming out of these roads and secondly, about speed, traffic coming down. So residents want to show them what they mean, but he won't come down, he'll send somebody else. And in the meantime, we're trying to get petition. I'm struggling to get it online at the moment. But it's been signed by the...
My time is your time on that because I went to see when the lady that had the report.
Right.
She fancied it, so I did have a email from Craig at the time. I can't always respond to Craig, he doesn't apply to me, but I do try to keep all our members in the picture. So if you do get a concern about that, Montefiore Road and that road, you mentioned that it went under silver flowers every day. And it's a concern, I'll take that to Paul Father. I completely may still work from home and I don't, since March 20, I'm still back there. Well, I just wanted to, there's one thing I know is to do it because I do have a lot of contacts in Ramsgate. Someone who, is that Ramsgate Town Council Paradise? Is that up that high street? Just a, just a...
Yes, certainly.
Just a chat, I know you'd like to make that as an area.
Oh, we've been...
In Lancy Coris, yeah.
I'll bring it to your attention.
Yeah.
You've got some good ideas for that area.
Yeah, they've got some.
And I've been in some of Paul Father on this road occasion, and there's a part of that road that doesn't belong to anyone, so I think...
Yes, we know, yes, yes. Oh, I'll email you shortly, yes.
I'm busy and while you're warring, I went to TDC, that's what we all did. And it does concern me, this level in that fund, I think all town councillors, all elected members should have a say in Ramsgate. Not on that, and I think that's valid, well, so I do try, try to work with these people and work in Ramsgate.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, thank you, councillor.
We put in this road management, or we've written a road management plan. And I think we prioritize to be prioritized, we're done. And one of the tanks, for example, is 20 miles an hour in most of the centre of Ramsgate. And we understand there's a plan called the Decriminalise Fund.
Decrimin.
Decrimin. And that we want to try and get some money from to do some of this. Can you help us with this?
Money very tight. I think I've got £6,000 regeneration fund, which I've probably spent £5,000 for that. And there are some roadworks involved in some of this as well. Like I said, it's very unusual for me to go up to KCC and see anybody face to face. It's all done online. We've had meetings, I think I went to heck, all of course, I bought as much as I put up. And just people sitting on their backs, I don't want to answer.
Well, as our councillor, if we could ask you to push for some allocation from this, for the traffic measures we want to make in the town. But we...
I'm sure I try and do it every night. I get Paul Father very big, I'm not able to take people on this field. I said, half an hour, two hours, it's not enough to drive around all motorways. I see the state roads, the potholes, the white lines, the lights that don't work, the pollution vehicles that don't work or need repairs. I'll take them on board.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for councillor Shonk at all?
Can I just say, whilst I'm here, I can't get round, I'm a light inspector, I'm a road inspector, I'm a push bike inspector, there's nothing actually working at KCC. And I do tell them, I have to be nice in a nice way, on this the nice one, you won't get nothing from chatting from boosters. If any councillor in your ward, in your own ward, has got that any concern, rather than I opted to make, I would take it to KCC. That's what we're here for. That's what we're here for.
Thank you. Super. Thanks very much. Well, thank you. You're welcome to stay and join us for the rest of the meeting, councillor Shonk, or you're welcome to go and enjoy your evening somewhere else. Feel free to do whatever.
This class will do so professionally.
Thank you. If you forgive us, we'll carry on with our meeting. Thank you. So minutes of council meetings. So item number four, to approve the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of the council held on the 27th of October 2021. Do we have a proposer for that? I'm going to need to see where they are at the moment. There with me.
Supposing.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Sorry, I was just checking to see whether I was there or not before I proposed. It's always good, isn't it, to know that you're actually, that you're in attendance before you say yes. So thank you very much. All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? All those abstaining? Absolutely, no problem. Thank you. Okay, item number five, I'll hand over to town clerk in a second on this. The basic parish allowance, let me, let me explain then, she'll reiterate what I've said but in a better way. Parish allowance is something that we don't currently take up. It's up to £600 for our particular town council for each individual councillor. This is to pay for expenses that you, you go through for the year. So, you know, your internet, your phone, your time, your petrol, whatever it is that you, you use. It's not anything to do with our ward allowance and the allowance that we as ward councillors then have decided that we would sort of like, you know, equate our wards. This is something to help the individual councillor to do with their own expenses. Now, the beauty of this too is, this allowance isn't something that you have to prove. You don't have to hand in receipts, you don't have to, you know, show your time or petrol receipts or what have you. The other beauty of it is, you don't as a personal councillor have to take it up. So for example, if you're in the fortunate position of not needing that £600 a year, you can say, no, thank you, I don't want it. If you're in the position where actually £600 a year makes an awful lot of difference to your petrol and your telephone and your internet and stuff like that. So that you're enabled to be a councillor, and I'm thinking for future here, for future, I mean, you know, we're only up here for another year. But for other people, especially, you know, if you're a single mum and you needed childcare or whatever it would be, that that £600 would help you for, then that would encourage a lot of other people to be a councillor because it would actually enable them to have that, you know, those facilities there. So I would like to put this to the council, that we take up the proposal of the basic parish allowance with the idea that if you don't want it, you don't have to have it. But if we voted it out, we exclude everybody from having it. So obviously, I'll open it up to the floor, but I'm just going to turn around to the town clerk. Is there anything I've forgotten or anything you'd like to say about that first?
No, I think you've covered that, Chair.
Oh, thank you very much.
Just saying that, so the, every four years, the East Kent Joint Parish Independent Remuneration Panel undertakes an investigation and makes a recommendation as to the level of payments councillors can receive. Their latest report was issued in February 2021, and I don't believe it's been brought forward to you previously for consideration.
No.
Which is why I'm doing so now. I think it would be appropriate to reconsider this matter every year. But I believe that actually you haven't considered this before or not in some time. So it included, you had, you had the results of that, you also have the legal topic note from the National Association of Local Councils explaining about how it works and what it's for. And at the moment, this item is sitting before the consideration of the budget because the budget currently does include a provision for this allowance. If the decision is made not to take it, when we get on to the next item of the budget, you can then consider what to do with that line in the budget.
And just before I hand over to councillor Piper, who I know would like to talk, two other things here. This isn't something that you could then take and then give to your ward. This is for your expenses. And it's important that we remunerate people for the effort they've put in in terms of costs. So this isn't something you think, right, well, I'll take it, but I don't need it and I'll give it to my ward. What we do as a town council with our ward allowance is something that we can give to our ward. This really and truthfully is for you personally towards your expenses. The second thing is, Broadstairs Town Council do take this up. They have this. So it's something that they do see as a necessity for their councillors. Sorry, councillor Piper.
Thank you very much, Chair. I've been here just six years now. And when we were first elected, it was explained to us specifically that what we now consider as our ward grant was in fact a ward councillor's allowance.
Yes.
And we were told then that the council had considered councillors allowances and decided not to take them, but to use them for our wards or for anyone who needed some help within, for the benefit of Ramsgate. I've used some of mine in the past to pay the community payback team, for example, to do some specific work for us. But it could well be that we were misinformed at that time by the... Don't know, would it have been the chairman, would it have been the town clerk? I don't know, but we were actually told that those two, the two that we're looking at now, were actually one in the same thing. And each year, traditionally on budget year, we have voted again not to take them, but to give them away instead. Thank you for your explanation. It seemed clear that they are in fact unrecapting two entirely different allowances. In the normal course of events, and this is where I begin to sound not quite so nice. In the normal course of events, then, for six years, we've been misled. But also, this would, if this was due to February 2021, would have been, or should have been, on either the budget meeting last year or the annual council meeting last year because it was in play when we decided not to take them. So I don't know what we do about that or whether, prior to any decision being made about whether people wish to take them or not. I think I'm hearing from you that...
It's not retrospective. We're talking about it for the next, for the next year. So although, sorry to interrupt, I'm just, sorry, I hedge your passive, if I can help. With regards to everything you said before exactly, I mean, it wasn't clear, we had this one allowance. But this, from what I gather from the town clerk, is very much a separate thing to enable us to do our jobs well. And I'm thinking again for future councillors, with all the costs and everything that they would have, you know, apart from our ward council. So this would be something that we would take up for next year for us as a group of councillors. And again, that's your choice if you want to take it up. And then of course, for the council, as you say, to bring every year to see, you know, as and when we do this with regards to like our own ward council payments, but also with this as well. So they'd run parallel, but they are actually two separate things in the sense that we have agreed to give the ward council to our wards.
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering whether, because as you say, if council presumably by a simple majority vote decides to do this, it's then up to the individuals whether they actually take it or not. But that won't affect the other...
Not at all.
And when you say next year, could I just ask, do you mean the next financial year? Or do you mean after the next annual meeting? Or do you mean 2023?
Good question. I shall hand over to the town clerk at that point.
Was it backdated to 2021?
I understand it. It should be in line with the council year following your election.
So May.
So the members in May, there is a right to pay the funds back if somebody leaves office midway through a year. And also just to highlight to you that we are obliged to deduct income tax, so it's something that would go through, it's a lawsuit.
Got you.
Certainly. You're welcome. Yes, councillor Green, thank you.
I have a question, Chair. If we decide to take this up, would the individual councillor have the option of taking less with the fee back?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, good question.
I think they couldn't take more.
Yes.
But I don't know why there would be a problem with opting to take less.
Thank you. Yes, councillor.
Chair, I think it's a good idea. We would encourage young people in future to... There's no offence, everyone here, but 21.
I said it back in 21.
Yes, okay. And with that, I will propose that we accept that we take this up as a council because, and again, the beauty of it is, you don't have to if you don't need it. That's really lovely. But allowing people that do need it to have that facility. So I propose that we accept this. Do I have a second, though?
No, I'll take it then.
Thank you, councillor. All right. Those in favour? Thank you. Those against? Abstain? Thank you. Okay, item number six on the agenda is the budget 2022, 2023. Consider and approve the Ramsgate Town Council budget that year mentioned as the draft is recommended by the Finance and General Purposes Committee. Be aware that the precept request must be submitted to the National District Council by the 10th of February 2022. Changes within the budget can be made throughout the year when approved by resolution, but there will be no further opportunity to change or increase the budget. And with that, I shall hand over to the town clerk.
Sorry, town clerk. It's like you, but there is, there wasn't a huge change in the version that I was seeing by the FNG committee. The Ramsgate fund allocation has gone back up to 35,000. Town promoters expenses has been correctly labelled as town promotion expenses because it's not related to that staff manager. And the other items, why the FNG is related to procedure and management as opposed to changes within the budget? Chair.
Sure, I was making sure, there's something urgently needed earlier and I wanted to make sure it wasn't that. Thank you, pardon, councillor Piper.
As we go down the list, I'm sure this is a typing error, for stationary, should be E R Y. Sorry.
And by election is a two election rather than a, to be either than a be one.
I read it all right.
So I, so by election, is it B Y or B?
B Y.
Y, yes. I never remember that one.
I think the other one means something else.
Don't get me wrong, I didn't write this, otherwise there'd be a lot more typos.
The other one.
My type is shocking, spelling is shocking. Anything else? Anybody want to talk to this at all?
Could I just, in terms of, no, please?
Go, councillor Green.
Just to come out, Chair, if we adopt this budget, then the council tax, the council tax person, it was not exactly the same.
Yes.
Yes, and I think we shouldn't...
It was on that basis that I was happy to vote for it.
Yes, exactly.
I wouldn't have been happy to vote for it if it had to put precedent.
Certainly, and I understand that. And I would be very happy to promote this, that we aren't putting the council tax up. Councillor Piper.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick one. This, if we meet at the beginning of the electoral year and decide, well, we decide that it's going to be offered to members, is that money in here?
Yes. A town clerk did actually say that, but I don't know.
I missed it. I'm so sorry. We need to give you a microphone, I think, town clerk.
We've got this all the way down the second page. We're passing that.
Chair. To the bottom, we've got some form text which is just for the...
Oh, got it.
...you've got parish allowance.
So we catered for that just in case. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Wing.
I mean, I reiterate what I said at the FNGP, if I've got the initials the right way around. This is the first time I've actually understood a set of councillor counts.
I see.
So thank you for making and explaining things in a way that helps me understand accounts. Because I clearly understand my own accounts, which is why I have an accountant. But yeah, thank you for that. Thank you.
Just a quick question, Chair. Sorry. The precept, what I was looking for was what would the precept be for to go on to the council tax if we adopt the budget?
We've kept it the same.
No increase.
It's the same. I couldn't see it written anywhere, so.
It was, it wasn't increased at all, so.
Right.
Sorry, go on, town clerk, thank you.
At the top, under income, that precept figure, you may notice that this is higher than the current year's figure. But that is because our tax base has increased.
Right.
So we've got more people paying the same amount.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Austin.
Can I just ask, I'm sure that we talked about this at FNGP, but I've forgotten, why Charlotte Corp's not against it?
Oh, underneath, if the subgiddings for Charlotte Corp.
I'm looking at the paper rather than the, right, okay.
And with that, I propose that we accept the budget in its current form, seconded by councillor Piper. All those in favour? Thank you. Super.
Could we just record both of thanks to those people who have been much more closely involved in this than most of us for putting it together in the way it has been done and making it so clear that we can actually understand it. No, we didn't do that overnight.
Thank you.
They're all involved. Thank you very much.
Probably a lot of unpicking to do. All right, item number seven on the agenda, fundings and grants. To consider applications received for community funding via the Ramsgate Fund from the fire factory, Screaming Alley, Seacodets, Mooch and the Miss Ramsgate Organisation. Let's do those first.
What's Screaming Alley? I know what the place called Screaming Alley.
It's a cabaret.
It's a cabaret group. They do loads of work around Ramsgate, lots of free stuff as well as stuff you can go in and pay for. This is where I hand over to you. Any order.
Right, so first of all, council is asked to ratify the allocation of £1,000 to the Royal Temple Yacht Club by the Town Promotion Committee on 24th of November 2021. Um, by the town promotion committee on twenty fourth of November twenty twenty one. Um, and this is where there was a requirement from the Ramsgate Fund to the Events Fund in order to be able to, um, to, to award that, that money to support the lights in Harbour, yeah.
Councillor, councillor.
I think to close this, Chair, um, anyway, it's not really been done, but, um, I do think that in future, we may need a report from the, uh, precisely what this is going to.
Certainly. So this is for the lights in the harbour and on the boats, just so that we, we're all sure on that. So absolutely. Yes, okay.
So, sorry, can members confirm by resolution that recommendation?
I think, yes, I second we do that. All those in favour? Thank you.
And now the, the balance of the Ramsgate Fund is twenty four thousand and sort of eight hundred pounds. And the applications before you, uh, first of all, we've got, um, an application from Pie Factory, uh, Ramsgate Youth Centre, um, total project expenditure ten thousand and they are requesting three thousand pounds. And this is in order to provide free professional counselling and creative intervention sessions to young people as a direct result of the increasing need for support, um, and growing waiting lists over the last two years. Um, and this family would provide sixty counselling sessions for young people. Not necessarily sixty individual young people, but possibly, uh, say ten people receiving six counselling sessions each. And do you want to do this one by one?
Well, you know, on any comments on this? Yes, councillor Wing.
Uh, right, I, I might be a bit confused because we've got a new application form coming. This is the Ramsgate Fund, which is capital projects. So is this coming to the wrong fund?
Um, so late last year, the, um, it was decided to open up the, um, unit of the Ramsgate, to try and encourage more applicants. And so capital and revenue was all of ones that can now be considered.
I think I would support this. It's a shame, uh, councillor Heatherington isn't here, but I have, I would want to see, I don't want the name of the councillor, but I want to see the qualifications of the councillor. Because we need to ensure that those young people, and I'm coming from a safeguarding point of view, are actually being counseled by a person who is appropriately qualified and covered by the appropriate, uh, professional body. And I think Jane can help us with that. Uh, but that, that is, that is, I, I mean, I support the money, but we would need to know that, that it is a suitably qualified person delivering, it's a qualified councillor with the right governing body.
Thank you. I was thinking the same thing. And my next question is councillor Green, is, is, did we have that information on their form?
It didn't look like it.
Um, it might be good if we could ask for that. Councillor Green?
I'm not sure what a creative intervention session is.
I could explain that.
Professional counselling. Um, so when I just come up, that's just been said about the qualifications of the councillor. And a little bit more in, information about what the aims of the session were.
Yes, I agree. It seems very vague. Councillor Piper, which one of you is?
Me, I go first.
Go, go, go.
Yes, of course. Um, yes, I, I would agree with, uh, councillor Green. We, we need to know exactly what we're giving this money for, um, because it's not, no, it's not a bottomless pit and to be given money and, um, as much money as that if we agree to give them that much. Um, need to be, I would like to see a little bit more detail of how these sessions work and what a creative intervention is.
Certainly. Councillor Piper.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, and also the, uh, rather crucially, uh, the qualifications that the person may have are important. But, uh, public liability insurance, um, in case anybody decides to take a course of action based on the counselling advice that they've been given. I think, given if we are part funding this, are we going to be held partly responsible if something goes horribly wrong and they haven't got the correct insurance? So that might be something we need to.
I think that's something that, that is kind of a broad spectrum for a lot of things, not just this. So I'm going to ask the town clerk, do we, do we generally have to worry about anything like that if we're contributing to, to a fund?
No, I'd say liability is sitting with Pie Factory Music.
Thank you.
Um, so the counter themselves and then Pie Factory Music for engaging that person.
Thank you.
I thought that's quite a, a far reaching umbrella, isn't it? Yes, councillor Wing.
I think I've just changed my mind because, uh, you know, I meant to young people and this, but I know the Pie Factory could have access to Collier Ferguson Charitable Trust money. And it's a hardship grant for young people and you can apply up to five hundred pounds for each young person. Because six sessions, I don't think is enough for some people, some young people. So I think we should be advising them that they could, if they, if they're presented with a young person who needs counselling, they can approach Collier Ferguson Charitable Trust for a hardship grant of up to five hundred pounds for counselling for that young person. Uh, there is, there are other pots they can dip into and, and Collier Ferguson Charitable Trust are a very, they only give to Kent-based, uh, people, uh, Kent-based organisations. So they must be a preferred partner. So they, I, I think they could probably access funding that way.
I was about to say that, actually.
No, because if you apply for the five hundred, it's got to be spent on that kid. You can't then do two kids. So the money's attached to the young person, not the project.
So where are we going with this? Are we proposing that we, that we keep the money aside, but we'd like some more information from them? In which case we need to specify that information because we can't just say give us more information or that's not what we wanted. Um, or are we asking to bring this back when they have given us more information and we're going to bring it back to another meeting? What would council prefer? What would the town clerk suggest?
So given that our next meeting is not until May, if you do want it to return, would you like to have an extraordinary meeting or something, something in between?
If it was, if it's prior a meeting and it was, it was a one item, then it would, it would be an easier thing to do, wouldn't it? Shall I suggest then, propose that we bring this back to a meeting at a later date? Councillor Wing?
I sort of agree with that, but I think we need to give them pre-advice about Collier Ferguson Charitable Trust. Because that would be a much better option for each of these young people because they could have access to ten counselling sess-, uh, ten counselling sessions rather than six.
Certainly, I don't, I don't mind doing that as well. Councillor?
Yeah, I was just going to say, actually, if a young person needs counselling and then they've got to fill in a whole load of forms, it might for these to come back before they can be lifted.
Collier Ferguson will turn the grant.
This would, this would be better.
Collier Ferguson can turn the grants round in three days.
Look, let's put it like this, councillor Mackinson, we can have an extraordinary meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty rapidly. So if we go back to them, giving the information that we've given them for advice and also asking them for other things that say, look, we'd really like more information about this, you know, educate us as to what you're doing, et cetera, et cetera. They come back with us. We can basically get that extraordinary meeting up, up and running ASAP. And then we can, if, and if we vote on it and, and we give them the money, then they get the money as soon as.
No, I'm talking about my, our money. I'm talking about this alternative money.
I realise, but. Yeah, certainly. But my proposal therefore is to, is to ask them for more information, bring it to a meeting at another date. Do I have a second, uh? Thank you. All those in favour? Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind writing to the town clerk, thank you very much.
Right, the next application is from, uh, Screaming Alley C I Cs, um, for a, a project totaling seven thousand pounds. They are asking for three thousand, which is for the purchase of theatre standard sound and light equipment to, to enhance Screaming Alley's indoor and outdoor productions and enable professional level training in theatre technical operation.
I don't know if any of you have been to anything that Screaming Alley does. I've been to a couple of their events and I have to say they're outstanding. They've worked with all sorts of groups. They do all sorts of things, whether it's the Addington Street Fair or the Sounds of, um, of the F, Festival of Sound. And every time I've seen them do anything, they've really brought the crowd, done, you know, got people involved, um, their, their showmanship, because that's what they do. But they're a group of people that work really, really well. And I, I'll report this, but what are other people's thoughts?
Thank you, Chair. Um, is it a private company?
I see, I see it's community.
Yeah, super. Right, okay.
Yeah. And they are very in.
Based.
They're very inclusive. I don't know is the answer. I mean, I, I've only been to see them in a couple of venues, so I don't actually know where they're based. Yeah.
Looks like a, a, a private address, yes, but on, on Eton Hill is the company address.
That's the same as Addington Street does. We'd use mine. So that's not.
Yes, yeah. But they do, every time I've seen them, they've, they've really, um, embraced the crowd. There's a lot of different people involved.
Are, are they, I mean, I've seen them several times at the Red Arrow Club and they help put money over the bar. So the Red Arrow Club are very keen to keep having them because, uh, it, it helps their takings over the bar. But beside, that besides, they also have done outdoor performances, large and small, all over the place. So, yeah, they are, they are a Ramsgate phenomenon, actually.
They did a, an excellent, um, show in the Yellington Park, the Ramsgate Festival of Sounds. And the, and the park was absolutely flooded with people. It was wonderful.
Most of the performers are Ramsgate-based as well, which is great.
Yes. Yes, councillor Green, thank you.
I think Ramsgate is so poorly served in all the arts. It really struggle. And, uh, it's very important for the life of the town. So I would propose that we grant.
Seconded you. I'd second that. And I also, just as I remember, the other thing I really like about them is they're not particularly centrally harbour-based. They tend to work in the peripheral areas of Ramsgate. I think that's really important as well. And I second that. So all those in favour? Thank you. Okay, next one.
Uh, so the next one is an application from Ramsgate Sea Cadets, um, for a project totaling two thousand seven hundred and twenty-three pounds. And the sea cadets are asking for the full funding from Ramsgate Town Council. And this is for, um, uh, two, two items. I T equipment in support of a Rembrandt Six Ship Maneuvering Simulator.
Again.
Um, which is a navigation system for cadets to learn from, where there will be a lockup of a ship's bridge with three screens, one forward facing and two side facing. Equipment required is, um, a server, workstation, three large monitors, associated equipment and, and cables. Cadets will, under supervision, use the equipment and schools and college students will be able to use it too. And in addition to this, this funding is also requested for, uh, uh, two computer chairs, uh, twelve general chairs and four tables.
Okay, now, this is just a, a personal reflection. There are some groups, um, and, and good luck to them that, that come to our fund every year. Obviously, it helps them, they need the money, um. I wondered whether, because, because this, the Ramsgate Sea Cadets, I feel is, is one of them. I wondered if we had effectively a, a catalogue of things that they'd asked for in the past and what we had helped them with. I'm not suggesting we don't give them money. I'm just saying that it might be nice to see how Ramsgate Town Council has assisted a group over a period of time. Especially in terms of like, I'd like it to be noted that it was us. So for them to recognise the fact that it is Ramsgate Town Council. I'm sure, I don't doubt for a minute that this group are in need of money. Do you know what I mean? But to be able to show that this benef- beneficiary, you know, is, is ours. Councillor Green?
Sure, I'm sure in the past, I was provided with that information when we've made a decision.
Yes. Because I, because I know that they've applied for things before, but you know, off the top of my head, I couldn't be specific as, as to what. I've got councillor Wing and then councillor Mackinson, thank you.
I, I know this group very well. I mean, they, 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 they have to maintain the inside of that building, uh, because T D C don't. Uh, they work with some of our most vulnerable young people. They, they, they survive, uh, cap in hand. Uh, I've tried to support them to actually access the Collier Ferguson grants because they, they try to raise money to provide kids with uniform when the kids haven't got the money to buy the uniform. So I will be, they do a great job. We don't often get grants in that are specifically for young people. Young people are sorely let down by funding, I believe, and I, I propose we give them a lot.
Certainly, before, or take a second for that proposal, just so that we've got it written down.
I'll take it now.
Councillor Aura, thank you. But councillor Mackinson?
I'm just wondering where they get their funding from normally. This can't be all their funding. Do they fund ways?
Funds, subscriptions.
Like the Brownies or the, you know.
So the parents and the kids.
Yes.
And also they're one of my chosen charities as well.
Yes.
I, I, I give money out of my.
Yeah, yes. And, and I'm, I mean, I'm all, I'm gonna vote that we do give them money. And please don't think that I'm, I'm trying to argue that we don't. But I would like to see, because if we do support this group, it might be nice to have, I don't know, some form of patient with them, some, some, some better budding service where they are aware that we are supporting them and we can see what they are doing with that money. And we can see over a period of time how their, um, you know, skills, et cetera, et cetera, developed, how the equipment's developed and so on and so forth through this.
Maybe we, maybe we need that from all of the grants because, I, you know, the, the, the group high chair comes back regularly for money. So we're quite happy to provide a, a, a brief update of what the money's gone. But yeah, promoting to the outside. Now, the sea cadets are in danger of losing their sight. They're, they're based in the, in the smack boys.
Yes, I realise that.
Absolutely certain we're going to be developing a closer relationship with them because they will need another home.
Yes, certainly. I've got councillor Mackinson and councillor Green. They are moving to the ice house, aren't they?
No, they're not moving to the ice house.
I've got councillor Green and councillor Piper.
In past years, Chair, this group used to support us in Flagfly.
I beg your pardon, I didn't hear you.
Support us in Flagfly.
Oh, right. Good, good.
They do attend some of our events.
Ember's Day.
I've seen them at that. Yes, good, okay. Councillor Piper?
I think the sea cadets are moving elsewhere because it's part of the, uh, loan out fund that their place is being refurbished.
Right.
I'm wholeheartedly for this, for the young people.
All right, let's clap on then and let's vote for it. All those in favour? Superb, thank you very much.
Next application is from an organisation called Mooch. Uh, total project, uh, six thousand zero two hundred pounds. Grant requested one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight pence. And this is for, um, the Ramsgate toilets next to the pavilion. A temporary art installation on the roof that says "we", we being spelt W H E E, exclamation mark. Mooch want to create a new reason for visitors to come to the sea front and find an artwork which is fun and profound at the same time. Um, permission from T D C has been confirmed.
It has been confirmed?
Yeah.
It, it does say, so in Eileen's application, she says, um, to be confirmed. But actually in their application, it says that it has been confirmed.
Okay. Now, for those that don't know, Mooch is, um, uh, an artist, um, working with, with various other people. They've done different artworks around Ramsgate. And the one that people would know the most would be the Food and Misery, which was the piece on the harbour arm that, that was up and down the water. It's now going to be a permanent fixture. It was temporary at, at, at the start. Um, we have got a permanent fixture coming. Um, and she's done an awful lot of large, um, quite charming things that get people talking and get people interested in areas of Ramsgate, if people didn't know who they were.
You missed a green one first.
Councillor Green, councillor Aura.
Yes, the one I remember was a few years ago, she did a, a crown.
The, the royal flush on the toilets, that was that.
Yeah, the plastic, uh, waste.
Yes.
Plastic bottles, which created a, a hard publicity for the, for the town, the industrial base.
Yes, yeah.
If this is of that quality, then. then I'm supportive, whether, whether the government ask or not.
Okay. She also did the ride, um, oh, what was it called?
Ride of Ramsgate.
Thank you.
Pre-meeting of the town promotion.
Yes, and she was very good at pushing in, in terms of publicity, in terms of the BBC and some things like that, like councillor Green said. She's very good at getting Ramsgate's name out there.
Yeah, I was going to mention that recently, uh, for the Holocaust memorial, the hashtag, uh, HMW. HMW, yeah, yeah, who did it in the sand, which they did it, Mooch, yeah.
Yes.
It gave us a huge amount of publicity.
Yes.
It's a wonderful creation. It did lots of, you know, uh, social media traction as well.
Yes.
And everywhere, so.
Yeah, she's very good at that. Thank you.
I, I've had recent, uh, several trips to Folkestone recently, a- after not having been there for, you know, two years or more. And it is really striking the amount of, uh, art installations that they have dotted all over the town, which really do generate some interest.
Hmm.
And this is a, a, a Ramsgate based artist as well, so we're sort of using our own again, which I think is very good.
Well, I am going to propose the whole amount, if I may. Go on, I've got, I'll need a second at some point, but I've got councillor Huxley, councillor Green.
It's probably a stupid question, but Y W H E E.
It says in the application. It's not a stupid question at all. Let's find out.
What do you?
Play on the word.
It's a play on the word "we", isn't it?
As in possibly when a, when a child's running around the beach and they go "wee".
Hmm, but it means "we".
Councillor, what do you mean?
It's like the colour, if you compare the quality of this person's work with the one that's just sitting on the ice.
Cheap as chips, this.
Yeah. Thank you. So I have-
I'll second it. I'll second it.
I've got a seconder. All those in favour? Thank you.
Uh, the final application is from the Miss Ramsgate Organisation. And this is, uh, for, for the same activity which, uh, Ramsgate Town Council has, uh, financed for, for several years now. Um, and it's, um, to, to purchase clothing for the, the courts, including daywear, dresses, shoes, fleece jacket, black suits, prom-style dresses to wear on the town float when visiting numerous carnivals. Uh, the court attends between fifty and sixty events every year as ambassadors for the town and are extremely popular. Funding is also requested to enable the float to be refurbished and decorated for carnivals and also for Christmas dates.
Thank you. Now, I'm a middle-aged woman and you know where I'm going with this one. However, we all know, we all know as ambassadors and as training for young people, et cetera, et cetera, this thing is, I'm, I'm channeling m- my councillor Peter Campbell here. You know, who does a wonderful job for Ramsgate. I hear you, Peter, and yet. Um, so I'm not about to say that we don't give them the money. However, year upon year, we have suggested that we speak to this particular group about the style and so on and so forth. That may be a difficult thing, but I think, wouldn't it be nice if we at least had them in for a presentation? And at least had an opportunity for them to explain themselves to us and for us to explain ourselves to them in a, in a polite, kind way, wanting to support them, but also wanting them to hear how we think possibly times move forward. That's just my thoughts there. I've got councillor Huxley, councillor Green.
But they don't recycle some of their clothes, so they need to take it each year. Surely some, I know obviously people have different sizes and shapes, I think, but they're not recycling some of the clothes again? Why do they have to have such clothes every year?
I agree.
It's for different people every year.
Uh, looking in the application, it does appear that, um, the, the queen is permitted, is a queen?
Yes.
Is permitted to keep, the outgoing person is permitted to keep one, one of the space addresses.
But it's not for citizens, so why do they have to have new clothes every year?
Yes.
I'm just thinking of a sort of environment.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I fully understand that. I agree with you. Councillor Green.
Uh, this is another organisation that comes back every year, you must know it. I can't remember what we've granted them in the past.
It's on there, they've listed it. Every year it's listed in the application.
Yes, normally. I have to say, the other times, it's always been a case of like, she's spent the money and she needs reimbursement and then we always feel a bit guilty that she's spent out all that money too, so. See, look, that comes up quite a lot.
Mine is on the end.
It's on there, it is listed.
It did, yeah, it's somewhere. I think, cause I think it's, it seems to be about two and a half thousand pounds each year. Ah, yes, so going back to twenty thirteen, there was, uh, two and a half thousand, two and a half thousand, two thousand, two thousand three hundred, two thousand five hundred, two thousand seven hundred and one.
Darling.
Oh, lovely.
I can sit.
Uh, Chair, I'm sorry to, I'm a member of the public, but I know Becky's talking about something to do with Spencer Square. I might, I might have been too late.
And will the decision be made to exclude the public and press, I'm afraid, darling?
Okay, so I-
Apologies.
Apologies for interrupting.
Oh, not at all, not at all, and you're very welcome and thank you for coming.
The Spencer Square, of course.
Thank you.
I should have told you.
Thank you.
Because-
Because we're talking about somebody's individual-
Lease, but, but the lease could be mentioned, which is not fair on the leaseholder.
It's a voucher that's gonna come up when we get to that, that item.
Right, so councillor Ara.
Yeah, well, Chair, I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, Miss Ramsgate, they do represent us, you know, all over Kent. Uh, I know they apply for the fund every year and we do give them to replace their dresses and other, uh, uh, other clo-, uh, you know, shoes and bags, et, et cetera. But I think they do, they do promote us, you know, so much and, and they do especially in any event, uh, as a mayoral event, they do come and support us.
Yeah. I think, but I think this is where this, this is where we have to draw a line in the sense that I've got every respect for them doing that. I don't need a young lass in a ball gown with fake tan representing me. I need them to represent me and be proud of the town. I'm just thinking it's the style of which it happens is, is what personally I find slightly sticks in my throat. Yes, they presta-, they, they represent us. And I suppose again, if you think about that over a year of representing us, is, is it a, a huge cost? No, possibly not. But I still feel that, you know, times move on.
It's a big, huge part of our carnival as well. Without the, you know, Miss Ramsgate, I don't think carnival will carry on, you know, we cannot have the carnival.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting we stop, we stop it. I'm just saying that there are elements of it that need to be spoken about because otherwise it just, it is the elephant in the room and every year we sort of like ignore it and I don't think we should anymore. Councillor Mackinson.
That person, I think, we ought to leave well alone and just let them get on with it. When we have our carnivals, we get horrible floats of-
Coming from all over Kent.
Tiaras from all over Kent.
Yeah.
And are they gonna come if we?
If we don't have the, uh.
Well, I know we're not suggesting we don't have it.
Yes.
But we've got to accept that we are gonna have it and give them some money or tell them to go and make their own thoughts.
I don't think that. I've got councillor Morgan.
Uh, I agree with Rochan. They do a very good job. They give, bring us lots of publicity. And I like, I like the way they look. And I think they look very nice. They travel everywhere. You know, and if there's anything going off in Ramsgate, you'll find them there. They work hard and I think we should support them because it's, some people may not like the setup that they do, but it's traditional. It's like clowns at the circus. No, I shouldn't have said that.
Okay, thank you.
That was tiny.
Certainly, certainly. I've got councillor Wing and councillor-
I'm conflicted as well, cause I, 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 I can see the, uh, development that happens in the individual child and, and, uh, you know, the growth that happens over a twelve-month period because there's an, it's, it's not just turn up. There is a massive amount of input into that young person and I, 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 because I work out of a school where there was, uh, 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 I know, I, I know a young person whose life has been immensely changed by being part of that call. But I also, sitting on the other side is my whole issue over equality. Uh, that boys are excluded from this process because of the very nature of it and I find that very difficult because it wouldn't be acceptable in any other, in an, in any other, you know, I couldn't allow just girls or boys to come to the Addington Street Revival Fair. So I think we should give them the money, but we need to be bold enough to sit, sit down. I'm quite happy to help with this process, to sit down and try and explain how we would like to see it move forward, even if, even if at some point we actually have a king and queen, a king and queen, if that makes sense, so that we're trying to address some of the equality issues.
So now I've got councillor Rosicky now, please.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna support them and, and when you see around Kent, um, the queens come either to here or our queens go to other organisations. They're always similar in any case on the way they're dressed, et cetera, and that's all part of the organisation. I think if we want to discuss any other ways of doing it, et cetera, then it should be done separately to this funding request. I don't think that this funding request is, is the time to say, right, you can talk to us or else.
Absolutely.
I think we should just get on with it and I would like to propose that we actually pay them the full amount.
Thank you. I, um, sorry, when I suggested that they came in and spoke to us, I thought it would have been a separate thing. I didn't think it would be uh, representative of what we're suggesting tonight. I just think, uh, considering that we're one of their funders year on, year on, year, it might be an idea to just bring them in and, and again, build a bond.
No, if we requested them to come and, and they'd do it, drop our hats, they love it.
Yeah, so maybe we should.
I think-
But it definitely wasn't whether we should give them the money with regards to that. Thank you. Councillor Ara.
I was gonna say, I think Marion did come last year at some point and did talk to us. You know, the lady who organises it. Yes.
Not, not to a council meeting, she hasn't, councillor Ara.
Oh, maybe. And, and also one other thing, after the last year's carnival, a lot of people has written to me about putting Mr Ramsgate, now we're talking about equality. Is there something maybe from the council point of view we can suggest to them? Can they look into it as well?
Certainly, with regards to, um-
You know, had some voice there as well, you know, does not, uh-
That's a question that we can have in that meeting.
Give them, I'm, I'm all in favour of giving them the money and then h- having some dialogue with them, not in a meeting where they come and talk to us, but, but talking with them. We may well be pushing at an open door.
All right, so we have a proposal on the table. Do we have a seconder?
I think-
Thank you. All those in favour? Thank you. Let's invite them in. Superb, right. Seven two, sorry, not very far down the agenda list, are we? To consider an application from Fanick C A B for funding from the Community Services Budget, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, if you'll remember past your minds back, we had, um, a state a, a few months back where they assumed, um, monies that we gave them were retrospective monies and therefore they'd spent it. We'd asked for more information with regards to the budget and accounts and so on and so forth. So here we are at that time of the year again, where they're now providing us with this to see what monies they need and what they use it on.
Twenty thousand.
Sorry, I was gonna let the town clerk speak on this, sorry. Should have said that to my first, I'll sit there.
Twenty thousand pounds. And you have just approved a, a budget which has forty thousand pounds in it. Um, which, which this funding would, would potentially come from.
Hmm. And in this funding application, have they given us specific information about what things cost? And why they need it? Or what they're paying for? Because I think the, the point before was, we're giving them this money and we almost don't know where that sum came from, who agreed it, what they do with it. Is it enough? Isn't it enough? And so on and so forth.
Um, so they've wrote it down there, the payment for a part-time advisor is, um, eleven thousand eight hundred pounds, pence, pennies. Payment of a supervisor for that advi- advisor is five thousand six hundred and on costs, you know, two thousand six hundred. Um, and it, it comes to exactly fifty thousand pounds, sorry, twenty thousand pounds.
Right. And am I right in thinking this is twenty thousand pounds separate from the fact that we loan them the room? We don't loan them the room.
Oh, so that's, that's a rate crisis. That's rate crisis downstairs.
Yes, I thought, yeah, absolute rate crisis, but I thought-
Was to give them a room, yeah.
I thought-
Yeah.
We did, yeah, we did. I'm not making this up, am I? We did-
No, no, yeah.
Right, that's, okay, they were here. Because I remember I was having the conversation with regards to, well, hang on a minute, we're also supporting them in, in regards of rent. So this is another reason why, I do remember things, I promise you, this is another reason why we wanted their accounts because we actually wanted to know the true cost of how we're supporting them. I'm all for supporting them. I'm literally just looking at the, at the, the nitty gritty of, of what, of what comes out of where and so on and so forth. So this grant is just for provision of personnel, it's not for rental at all. We don't provide that in any shape or form.
No.
Right, that's clear, that one.
A person, person in the debt advice clinic.
Yes. Right, councillor Piper, councillor Green.
I think councillor Green was very, very-
Well, I was, I was, we're giving them the full amount conditional on their providing service in Ramsgate.
Okay.
Conditional on what, sir? I couldn't hear that, Chair.
Provide the service in Ramsgate.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we, uh, you, you're quite right, they were downstairs and then when they moved and, and looking back at the figures, you can see that historically, uh, we began a few years ago by giving citizens an advice in the rate crisis centre, ten thousand pounds each, each year.
Yes.
To provide the service.
Yes.
Um, and that went up to twelve and then in twenty twenty, just before the pandemic, uh, really, it is for a second time, uh, um, it was up to twenty thousand pounds because it was recognised there was greater need.
There is greater need.
Uh, because of the first batch of lockdown and all these activities and so on. And I think at the time, I may be wrong, but I think most of us assumed that that twenty thousand pounds for each organisation would be a permanent feature to provide the service, as councillor Green said, in Ramsgate.
Right, okay. Councillor Wing.
Oh, I'm just looking, current payment awaiting decision for April two, twenty twenty-two onwards from Fanick District Council. So is, uh, I mean, what happens if they don't get that? Because we know there are cuts coming from TDC all over the place. Uh, so what do we do if they lose the ninety-four thousand? I mean, I totally agree that, uh, it is a, uh, an oversubscribed service. Uh, and we should give them the twenty thousand.
No. Absolutely. I mean, the, the fact, that's sort of like out of our hands. I mean, you know, because you're not gonna stump up, we don't have the money to stump up, but it's a case of like, that's their problem to deal with. That's the whole way of saying it, isn't it? You know, to me. And so that we are looking to see whether we can provide them with the amounts to help Ramsgate residents. Yes, we can. I should imagine. We'll vote on that in a second. Um, and they have to work out the premises and they have to work out their other funding separately. But the, the, the condition that the councillor has set for this proposal is that it is for Ramsgate. I've got councillor Huxley and councillor Austin.
Um, they wrote parts on matters from Kent and Bush, right?
Yeah. Oh, they write.
See, that's where we would like the funding to be.
Well, but-
As, as councillor Green was saying, we want this spent in Ramsgate, it's just that it's here.
Yes.
So are we going to have guaranteed expenses in that equity?
Well, it has to be guaranteed because if it's not guaranteed, then they don't get the money. Exactly.
It, it actually says in the application to pay for a part-time debt assessment phase specifically for Ramsgate's advice.
Right.
The grant will help sustain the manning, I don't like the manning, of the Ramsgate office by having a paid member of staff.
Right.
And we, uh, you know, in support of this, we know that there's going to be more and more need for debt and money.
Certainly. With that, I will second the proposal on the table. All those in favour? Thank you.
I think it's another service we have to provide, I think we can put this up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Right, at the end of funding and grants, number three, it says to receive a written report from the town clerk, um, and our RFO to consider whether funding for a shopfront design guide as part of the Heritage Street Action Zone project should be approved.
Does he, it's a bit, it was a bit-
I shall let the town clerk talk to this one.
It looked pretty.
Um, so there was the understanding by the House Partnership Board, um, that there was gonna be a commitment of, um, up to fifty thousand pounds from Ramsgate Town Council. Um, uh, however, that money has not been approved in, in the last few years by the council and neither has it been called upon by the House Board. Uh, however, as the, um, the House Partnership Project is coming to an end, um, there has been a trust made, um, to yourselves, that ten thousand pounds um, be spent on a, um, shopfront design guide. Um, in advance of, uh, trying to anticipate what you might ask about this. Um, I asked for confirmation of exactly what are a shopfront design cost, that guide cost? Is it exactly ten thousand pounds or is there more, I mean, elsewhere? Um, that figure has come from historic England. I've said that that would be an adequate budget to put together a specific document for Ramsgate. Um, I also said that there's some good documents already in place. Um, either there's, there's some good examples that is, that other, of, in other districts. And, um, the neighbourhood planning members have also highlighted that T D C has its own, already has a shopfront design from two thousand and four, which may be dated, dated in its presentation, but, um, actually could money not be spent on revitalising that instead of writing something new?
My town has got the town, when the town team one was in play.
The town team one is still in use now, um, although our money for, um, for giving our shopfront grants theoretically has, has, um, disappeared, but in practice we still actually, uh, give the occasional shopfront grant and we still use that documentation. I, I have to say that I stole it quite unashamedly from another council and, you know, did find and replace on it, but we used it for years. It's not beautiful, it's not gloriously presented, it's not quite as dated looking as T D C's, uh, information. But frankly, I, I can't see the need for ten thousand pounds to spend.
Okay, I've got councillor Green and councillor Macason.
So it, it looks to me as though we're committed to donating ten thousand pounds by Richard five years ago.
Which is gone.
But it's used for this, I, I have my doubts, but it might be better to, to actually donate it towards.
Shopfronts.
Design the shopfronts.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Macason.
I, I must just get, and it says it in the document, that T D C has to absolutely ignore notice
Yes.
of our shopfront design plans.
I think.
That's like allowed to go up in the history, it's very small. And I reported it and I got it back and right in front of them, but it's okay.
So just before I let councillor Piper talk, I mean, that was exactly my thoughts. There's, I spoke to the town clerk at length on this to get some information about it. And I think one of the overriding things that, you know, really stands out is the fact that it's generally ignored by the planning department.
Yes.
Well, it seems an awful lot of money to, to use for, for, for them to become redundant. If it has zero, you know, pounds worth in the end, then again, I'd rather see that ten thousand pounds be used to something tangible, to beautify and historically, you know, yeah, add, add value to, to our town in a, in a different matter. I apologise to Louise Hobre, how, sorry if I've pronounced your name incorrectly, with regards to what was promised and, and and, you know, you thought you might be getting something you might not type thing. But, um, I don't see this as a particular, of, this particular venture as, as value for money.
No.
In, in, in my eyes. Councillor Piper?
Uh, thank you, Chair. There were two things that let out at me. I was around in twenty seventeen and I have no recollection of council ever agreeing to fifty thousand pounds. It, it says ten thousand, but it says per annum over a five-year period. And so, and it says it was agreed at the time by Richard Stiles. Um, I don't recall that ever being brought before council and that would raise the question for me, quite apart from the fact that I agree with you entirely, um, who would have given him authority to commit fifty thousand pounds of public money for something like this? It may have been he was given the authority, so I'm not poking a finger at him, I'm just saying that seems to me to be most unusual. It should have come through the council.
Yes, I've got councillor Macason.
I agree with you.
Yeah, we should have been. I mean, I spoke, again, sorry councillor Macason, I spoke to Louisa at the House of Commons not long back when I was up, um, the levelling fund and she was really informative. And I have to say, I've got more information out of her than I have done from any T D C officer for a very long time. And I do feel, this is an unfortunate thing, because I think I'd like to have worked with her hand in hand on a lot of different projects over what Ramsgate's done and, and again, that boils down to another matter of like, you know, council officers being present at meetings and councillors not being able to be present at meetings and information not coming through, that's a whole separate issue. Because I do feel that she's done an awful lot of good and she's got a lot of, um, good ideas coming up. But in this particular case, I really don't think it is value for money. I've got councillor Macason, then councillor Rosatkin, thank you.
I've got to say, I'm sure we can cobble together, I don't mean a cobble together one, a professional one. And I'm prepared to work on it, but we will need money to get it public.
I think that's the point, councillor, though. We have one. In fact, we have two.
Using the one we've got and looking at the very good ones we've got from the other towns. We can put, we can make it more comprehensive and.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly, absolutely. Councillor?
Uh, just looking at this, I mean, this is a, a planning issue, et cetera. Um, or can be part of a planning issue, therefore, where uh, funds come in from section one oh six agreements, I think this is where this kind of money should be uh, obtained from not from us, but from section one oh six agreements in the builders, et cetera. Uh, and they should be paying for this.
Right. Councillor Piper?
If I could just come back on councillor Green's comment, please. I, from my reading of this, reading the paragraphs further down, although the agreement seems to have been made by Mr Stiles, they haven't had any money at all. And it's only now that the house money is running out, they're saying, can you now make good on your promise? Have I, have I misread that?
Um, I, I, I think it's more that the house project is coming to an end as opposed to running out of money.
Which is of course.
Yes, I think it, it's now realising that actually that Ramsgate Town Council hasn't contributed enough and.
Councillor Austin?
It's a possibility, Chair, that we could make positive noises to Louisa in, in the terms that you were just saying.
Yes.
And saying that Ramsgate Town Council is in principle perfectly willing to foot up ten thousand pounds for something that benefits the.
Historic streets, yes.
areas in, in Ramsgate, subject to discussion with her, but we don't think this is value for money. So that we're not saying, no, we don't want to have anything to do with it, we're saying, we, we're really supportive of the work we're doing
Yes.
around our historic high streets, but we want to have a discussion with you about it.
And let's invite her in.
And invite her in.
Because I have to say, she was really comprehensive and very informative when I spoke to her. I'd love her to, to present to council. Sound like.
It's like.
Had a motion.
Can I, can I propose that? That we, that we say, no, we don't want to spend the ten thousand pounds on that, but we are very willing to speak to her. Would she like to come in and talk about another way you could contribute ten thousand pounds to?
I would second that if we, if, if you're going to vote on it, all those in favour? Thank you. Cheers, thank you. Right, okay, item number eight on the agenda is the climate change emergency. To consider a written report from town clerk and consider if council should declare a climate change emergency. Do you want to talk first or shall I? Go on, you go.
Uh, so, um, the, the council has already taken, um, actions relating to, um, uh, becoming carbon neutral and becoming aware of its, its carbon footprint. For example, um, the, the early discussions about, um, heating considerations from Bradford House, um, the carbon calculations that, um, being undertaken. Um, however, a, um, a full climate change emergency has not previously been declared. Um, this report sets out the steps for, for how to do that, what to read. Um, and then what declaring an emergency would mean that you're committing to. Um, there's, within my report, there's five things which, um, are not set in stone, but these in indicates the, the intentions that should be behind, um, uh, declaring a climate change emergency. So, um, uh, carbon neutrality by twenty thirty and to convene a task and finish group to work with, um, officers, the local community. Um, and then to report back to council in six months with practical actions that can be taken. This is a good time of the year to be considering this because if, uh, you're kind of cosping up and doing research now and then reporting back in six months' time, it can then be factored into the next year's budget of undoing these. Um, to develop, um, a communication strategy to convey to the residents the severity of the situation and the ways people and businesses can take independent action to cap greenhouse gas emissions and to lobby government for the right powers and resources needed to address this issue.
Okay, so what I'd like to say is, um, first of all, I had a, a note from Dean earlier that we are forty percent down in our carbon emissions than we were last year, or we're down on the recordings from the year before, so it might not be this year. I'll let him explain to that. Anyway, it's going in the right direction, forty percent, that's fantastic. My argument has always been here that we declare a climate emergency for various reasons. It used to be when people used to do that, you think, well, what was it? It, it's sort of like a, you know, lip service, but nothing ever really got done. Or we've moved on from those times. And we know, I mean, we had the, um, climate emergency, um, officer didn't make here explaining about how we can do things to, to help our, our community, our council and so on and so forth. But the, the reason I really think we ought to be doing this is one, you know, we nail our flag to the mast and what have you, we say we're going to do it and we held, we hold ourselves accountable, but we can also be held accountable. And therefore we have to think, rather than just thinking, right, we'll work towards it one way or another, we actually do things positively towards it, which I do believe that we're doing, that we have to. But the other thing that I think is crucial is the bit that I'm getting to is we can apply for more funding to do the things that we want to do if we have declared a climate emergency. And so therefore we don't necessarily have to do it on our own, but we're not going to get that funding if we don't show that we are willing to want to go in that particular direction. So I think for those reasons, it is really quite important. Councillor Green?
My conflict about this is, um, declaring a town emergency sort of implies that we're going to try to influence how our town responds to, to call it. And I don't think we have the powers or the ability to do that. We're unhappy with us doing what we can about our own, um, organisation and we're making great progress with that. But I don't see how we expect town council as opposed to T D C can make that much difference to how the town.
I think, sorry, just to, to answer that myself first, I think we have to be the beacon of light to show that we are willing to do this and we are trying to do it and we would encourage the, you know, the town to follow us in, in, in that step. You're right, we don't have the power or the money to make sure that Ramsgate on the whole does this. But if we don't show that this is what we would like as a, a town, this is what we as a town are aspiring to, then effectively we're almost sending out the wrong message and we have to do what we can as a council to, to be able to, to demonstrate this in, in the best way we can, would be my answer to that.
And we've got to do more about what grants declaring a climate emergency would be.
Certainly, okay. I've got councillor Rosatkin, councillor Austin.
T D C declared a count, uh, climate emergency, two years ago? About two years ago and I, I feel that covers Ramsgate. I think what would be adequate is that we support T D C. She's against, um, climate change rather than trying to do it ourselves, because we haven't got anything like the funding that would be required. Um, and so I think that would be a better way forward myself.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but if we're doing things like, as we are doing, um, with regards to um, the milk floats, that's a contentious issue, isn't it at the moment? But, you know, so we've got carbon, um, mutual paper, we, we, we are turning things in our office and so on and so forth to go that right way. Aren't we almost just notifying people? Because I don't think Ramsgate necessarily understands what Ramsgate Town Council is trying to do. But if we actually announce it, we're not held, they're not a gun to our heads if you have to achieve this by a certain time. But aren't we showing that this is the way forward that we would like to go?
I, I don't think that the, the people of Ramsgate wouldn't necessarily, and don't take me wrong in this, but I understand what we're saying, because we won't get enough information out to them. I know the way T D C, uh, are getting information out to people and everything, that's fine. If we piggyback on that rather than trying to do something separately ourselves, we couldn't, we couldn't really get the correct information out. Um, the cost of that would be, would, would start spiralling up. Personally, I think we should go with supporting T D C and their climate change, uh, declaration of climate change rather than trying to do something separately ourselves.
Okay. And I hear you and I, I, I listen to what you're saying. I'm just thinking that we'd just be saying we'd be backing up T D C by doing that is, is almost the same thing. I think we, we're like, almost saying the same thing, but you're suggesting that we don't announce it necessarily ourselves. I'm saying that we, it would enhance us if we did, because again, we could get more funding. I've got councillor, councillor and councillor Ara, thank you.
Um, I, I don't agree with, with councillor Rosatkin. Um, I think that what we could do would be in support of what T D C does, obviously very much in the organisation and obviously considering it to what we can do. But I don't see any reason why we shouldn't, for example, put something in the Ad Mam every time that that comes out, put stuff on the website. I'm happy to work with Dean to, to put information, uh, into the Ad Mam, for example, that's, that has ideas about how people can, uh, reduce their carbon footprint in their own households, how they can reduce their energy bills down, et cetera, et cetera. Every year there is, um, a big green week, we did it for the first time in Fanick, uh, la, uh, last year in October and it will come up again, uh, September or October this year. And there's a lot of resources there already on the Facebook page that we can just update. And there's things that we can quite easily do that hopefully will help and they get the message to some residents that will help them to cut their costs and so on, as well as be more, uh, uh, carbon friendly. Um, and, uh, we may be able to get messages across to people who may not ever access the T D C website, for example.
Okay, certainly. Thank you, councillor Green.
I think, well, shall I, I think you.
Oh, beg your pardon.
You, you, you're wrong. I, 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 I mean, I think the one, the one problem with a climate emergency is loads of people have declared it and, and the vast majority of the population don't understand any of it and, and a lot of that includes me. Uh, it's all, it's all policy and policies are very difficult to access because that you can't, you can't, the average person is not going to be able to understand how you take that policy into something concrete in your actual house or in your lifestyle. Uh, I, I do think we should be declaring a climate emergency, but I think the first thing we maybe should do before we declare, we declare that climate emergency is, is develop the working group to look at what we can do. And I think our steps have got to be very practically based. T D C steps are not practically based and they're not focused on individual homes. There is something locally called the Green Plaque, which has been developed by people who are Ramsgate based, which, which, which local people can access. And you do an assessment, an online assessment of your life, I've done it, of your, where you live, and then it gives you advice. You get an initial green plaque if you've done the assessment. Uh, I, I also believe that some of the stuff Dean has done with his little Excel spreadsheet. It, I, I mean, I think he's done simple things like replacing all, replacing all the bulbs, moving the computers and switching everything off. There's a version of that, I believe, that Dean could do that would actually, uh, could be, we could, we could help, that could be used to help residents. The other thing I, 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 I brought from Charlton and Charlton's, because I'm on the green group at Charlton, that our policy is, is like that big, our, our, our climate emergency policy is that big. And then there is a list of things that we're going to try and do, which, uh, the simple thing is don't switch the dish, I'm not in the London-based office, but don't switch the dishwasher on until it's full. And I think that's the type of thing we can get involved in, the sort of things that people can uh, try to, try to, try to shift in their, in their own lives. I don't use shampoo, I use soap now, sha, soap shampoo, so I've, I've tried to reduce my own plastics. And I think it's this end of the climate emergency where we're best, we're best suited to actually, uh. to do that, yeah, output.
Certainly, thank you. Councillor Ara?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think Ramsgate Town Council should declare it, because, and also I think if we take hold of our small businesses, you know, the Ramsgate Small Businesses, start from there, and maybe give them some kind of incentives or rewards that don't use these plastic containers, don't use this plastic bag, we might give you so-so amount of this, you know, fund, so you can use paper bags and things like that. I think that would be great help, and that would go well, rather than, you know, trying to educate the whole community. I think businesses would be first place to start with.
I've got councillor Piper, councillor Mackinson, councillor Huxley.
Yeah, I think we should declare a climate emergency. Get a committee, have an action plan, that's what TDC have done. They've got an action plan, they're in a sort of climate group with other councils in Kent, KCC are leading on that. Whether they'll ever get any funding from central governments, we know. That seems to be a question that's up in the air. But TDC are doing a lot of tourism, so we encourage some tourists and about people, things like that, to sort of go green, so they should get visitor visas. So I think we can do it as a, RTC, we should start off our own backyard.
Thank you. That reminds me, actually, thank you councillor Huxley, because one of the things I think that we, again, as a town council, and we do have visitors down, is we want them to be aware that they're coming to our town, leaving their imprint on our town, and we're having to deal with that. So in the pandemic, when everybody came down to us because they were allowed some time out and they were all crammed on the beaches, they left us with their rubbish and so on and so forth. That is an issue that we, we get left with. Councillor Piper, then councillor Mackinson, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I suppose somebody's got to be the big one, the wolf. It rolls off the tongue very, very quickly. Sorry councillor Green, loads of people have declared it, no they haven't. The facts are that sixty councils have declared it so far across the entire United Kingdom. There are more than sixty councils in this south-east corner of Kent alone. So in fact, I think the trend seems to be, quite apart from this big, this is important, but I think it's also somewhat trendy. The trend seems to be that the bigger councils, picking up on one of the points that councillor Green made, the bigger councils who have the facilities and the operational capabilities of doing this. Some of them, like TDC, have declared a climate emergency, KCC are leading on it. I think the best we can do, a lot has already been done, we can talk about carbon neutrality for the council, about our net zero and so on, for the council. But how on earth do we, as Little Old Ramsgate Town Council, report within six months on what actions must be taken, and how to achieve behavioural change with our residents? Acting within our powers, we haven't got any, and responsibilities to set targets and measure the effectiveness, to develop communication strategies to convince residents the severity of the situation, ways businesses can take action. A lot of the businesses work, of course, is in their recycling and their distribution of waste and so on. TDC are already doing that. So, to be honest, I would want us to take the matter seriously, to do what we can as a council to affect the council. But I think it's just a bit too trendy for me to say that Ramsgate Town Council should declare a climate emergency. I suspect there aren't many of us, even in this room, that understand the science, because not many people do. We were told just the other day at TDC that eighty percent of the cause of carbon emissions in this planet is due to deforestation and cattle and sheep farming, and so we should all become vegan. My question to that lady was, well, why the drive to electric cars? And deforestation and cattle and sheep farming is not a problem for Thanet. So why are we using the world issue to look at firstly Thanet, and then Little Old Ramsgate? So I agree it's important, I know we should do something about it. We have a community magazine which we can use, we can produce all sorts of bulletins on our Facebook page, to encourage and so on, but I think it's just a little bit too trendy for me, Chair. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mackinson, councillor Austin, and councillor Green.
I sort of basically agree with what that councillor was saying. There is absolutely no reason on earth why we can't recommend all these things, try and get the takeaways with their polyester and containers to, but we don't have to say it's a climate emergency. We know, we know the reason. As councillor MacInnes says...
I'll refer back to my... If you don't say it, how?
I'll refer back to my initial comment though, councillor Mackinson, there is funding here to be had if we do, and that would assist us. So we are doing those things, absolutely, we can do all of those things. But let's not miss a bit of a gift horse, should we? Because it's like, if we can get some money by doing this, then that will also help us. So that's, that is a big issue here. I've got councillor Austin, I've got councillor Green.
Just a couple of things. The first one is, but I understand what councillor Piper's saying. I think actually sixty councils are sixty district councils. I think they're first tier councils, or second tier town councils. I don't think that includes all the broadside town councils that have already done this ages ago. I do think it is worth putting our money where our mouth is. I do think, you know, and the money obviously is a helpful aspect that the Chair has highlighted. But I do think it's, it's, and it can be counted time. And I think, yes, there's lots of useful information and advice and so on that we can highlight, not providing it ourselves, but sources of advice that are out there that we can give to our residents and our businesses. And yes, obviously, if it says we'll do this within our powers, and our powers are very limited, then there are certain things that we are going to be very limited about doing. But we can show willing, we can, as you say, be a beacon of light, Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Right, councillor Green?
If councillor Green is proposing a working party, which I think she almost did...
I see some of the plans anywhere. I suppose I'm just, I'm just saying...
You're volunteering, basically, is what you're saying. Yeah, yeah.
Then I would support that, if you're a working party, and give it to one of our committees. Look at what we actually could do. Look at what funding sources there are. And how much it would, what sort of budget we would need to achieve those things that we could do. Come back to the next council meeting and decide then whether to declare a climate emergency.
I'm more than happy to second that, if that's the proposal.
Could that committee include residents with more knowledge about this than we have?
I don't know.
Yes, one of the things the town clerk recommends, isn't it?
Yeah.
If you have a working party, of course, but if it's a committee, it can't.
Or maybe it's a working party that reports to a committee.
You can have co-opted members from the local community on official committees. And they can be voting members if that is, if you wish them to be. There's only a small number of matters which co-opted members cannot vote on, and that includes setting of the precept. But in terms of a an advisory committee or a working group, that would be perfectly acceptable to have members from the community with or without voting rights.
And might I ask, if councillor Green, if that is a proposal, what meeting are you suggesting it comes back to? What is our timeline here?
The next council meeting.
So May?
Yeah.
Yeah, next full council, yeah, May.
Because of the budget.
Yeah, certainly, certainly, absolutely. Is that something that you'd support councillor Green?
The time span might be a bit tricky with other things coming on, and, you know, we'd have to decide the makeup of that group. I mean, I'd certainly like Dean on it because of his work, so there are key people that... Yeah, I would support that. And maybe, maybe at that May meeting, there's just an outline rather than the detail of stuff.
Certainly, thank you councillor Austin.
I just, I just feel really strongly that actually there is not a decision about whether to declare a climate emergency. We know there is a climate emergency, and we're already working towards it. I don't see why we can't declare a climate emergency now and go ahead then with a working group that's going to do it. With things that councillor Green recommends. It seems to me to be quite ridiculous to say we're not going to declare a climate emergency in February, we'll do it in May.
I can bring you on that.
Forgive me, Chair. Some scientists agree there's a climate emergency. For everyone who says there is, there's another one who says there isn't. What I would like to see as a layperson is the evidence, the scientific evidence from both sides of the argument.
Voted for it in TDC?
No, I didn't.
You didn't?
TDC voted for it, I didn't. I have yet to be convinced that the science is accurate.
So it was voted for unanimously at TDC, and you weren't there?
I didn't, I'm not here.
If we could bring it back to council, sorry, I've got councillor Huxley and I've got councillor Green, thank you.
There is a economic argument for decarbonising anyway, with you...
Absolutely.
It's a favourite line. Light bulbs, heating.
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
I think from that point, if you're never running anything out, I think we should do it.
Yes, thank you. I've got a question for the town clerk in a second, but councillor Green?
Ultimately, there's only one way of doing climate change, and that's to find some way of stabilising our population. If you don't do that, then inevitably we're...
We're definitely not doing that in this council.
I'm strong, I'm suggesting.
I would not say that I'd allow more children.
I've got more children, I'm fine.
That's not a matter of... But stop by for some China.
No, actually, having children is the main thing. If you're going to interrupt, and you shouldn't do, you should go through the chair. But if you're going to say something like that, I've got a very strong opinion on that, and if China only produces things that people ask them to buy. So they put in orders, China makes it. If you don't put in the order, China doesn't make it. You can't say something like that, councillor Mackinson, that's completely unfair. And overriding statistics are, children are the biggest, having children is the biggest pollution in the world. So I'm, I'm sorry, I won't allow that comment. Right, my question to the town clerk is, we have a proposal on the table, a councillor is suggesting we sort of like do that anyway. Legally, where are we standing with this, and what are we doing?
Right, so councillor Green, your motion is for a a group, whether it be a committee or a working group, to go into some more specifics about what can be done, what can be achieved, what the costs are, and then bring that back to a future mayor's council.
And what funding streams it would be like.
With the idea that we then vote at that time on whether we... Right. And that is on the table, so we have to vote on that. Yes?
It's a bit seconded.
If it's seconded, do we have a seconder on that? I think I did, yes. Right, so we're voting on that. All those in favour? Right, having seconded it. Right, all those against?
Clear climate emergency.
Motion's passed.
Thank you, right. So the proposal is, councillor Austin, do you have a proposal?
My proposal is that we declare a climate emergency now, and that we then take the steps that councillor Green suggested, and then report back to the next council meeting on where the working group has gone to with those things, incorporating the excellent work that Dean and others have already done.
Right, thank you, Dean. Seconder, thank you. We've got councillor Ara seconding. All those in favour? Oh, sorry, beg your pardon, yes, of course you can, councillor.
And if that is I'll choose my way to Catherine, rather than sharing. Because if we declare a climate emergency, then the committee finds that there's nothing we can do, or that it's not advantageous in terms of funding. We've got to look at what part of it, aren't we?
No, that...
Get out, best you may.
The point is that we recognise that there is a climate emergency. We know there are things we can do in terms of providing information to residents and businesses, which includes, as councillor Huxley's pointed out, ways they can save money, as well as being more common, go towards being carbon neutral. So what we're looking at here is, what can we realistically do from here on in, and how can we help? It should not, declaring a climate emergency should not depend on whether there is funding available, but we know that there is funding available, which could be helpful. But it's not, it's not a condition for us declaring, well, we claim a climate emergency because there's a climate emergency.
Right, and on that, I will go to the vote. All those in favour of declaring a climate emergency? All those against?
Motion passed.
Thank you. You're timing that.
It's a good debate, though.
That's one sided, if you're going to say there is an emergency. That's one sided.
More people agree there is an emergency than don't agree.
That's why we debated and voted on it. Right, item number nine on the agenda is Spence Square.
Oh, we were doing that one last.
Are we? We're not just doing that one last, I'm asking about this. It hasn't been decided.
All right, okay.
Ask. Somebody proposing we do this one last. Thank you councillor Piper.
And could I, I don't know if it's possible, Chair, but can I propose at the same time that when we get to this one, we formally exclude press and public on the grounds that we could be talking about an easily identifiable
Yeah.
individual member of the public.
Has anybody got any comments on that? Okay, right, thank you. So we'll move this one to the end, thank you. Archive Grant, number ten. Well, I'm waiting the town clerk to mention this. I don't know if you've followed Tony Ovindon, who's obviously a district councillor, he's a fantastic archivist and historian, and he also works at the railway station. But he's done some sterling work, saving the stuff that we have, and really trying to preserve it, and getting it under people's noses that this is an important issue. So here we have a request to apply for the National Archive Scoping Grant Fund, and that which, that point I will hand over.
Could I go to the toilet, please?
No, I'm sorry. Thank you for asking, we're done. Okay, I'll hand over to the town clerk, thank you.
Something that hasn't been raised by the council, but I'm proud to pick up on in relation to different conversations, is about whether now or in the future, actually, the town council could play a role within the town archive for the items that are not covered by the Maritime Museum and the Ramsgate Tunnels. And I think of two things that would make a a very useful and important starting point to think about our collection is to catalogue everything, and to have a collections policy, to say what it is that we do take, and what it is that we don't. Obviously, you're, hopefully, really aware of various artefacts which are in the mayor's parlour. And in my report, that's a photo of the Ramsgate Borough Council records, so some of which, I understand that actually quite a lot were have been binged and lost, or put into skips or lost over the years. I think that, I expect this grand pop to be quite heavily fully subscribed. But it is a grand pop that's reissued every couple of months, and when a kind of, as a starting point towards thinking about cataloguing our collection and having a a collection policy, when you're likely to put something together and try and get some funding for it.
I'm basically going to propose that we do this, I don't know if...
Seconded, so.
Seconded. All those in favour? I think it's crucial, isn't it? I mean, what can you say to that, really? I mean, we just need to get on with it. Thank you. Council representatives, confirm the council's nominated representative for the Levelling Up Fund Executive Group, and to confirm the council's nominated representative for Population Health Management, PHM Development Programme. Councillor Headington, unfortunately, is not here this evening, was put forward as the second item, pending learning more that was involved. I'll come on to her in a second, let's do the first bit first. Confirm the council's nominated representative for the Levelling Up Fund Executive Group, can't say that easily, sorry. So...
Oh, so that's the Chair, Chair.
Yes, thank you. So a letter of sense to the town clerk and myself with regards to a councillor representing Ramsgate Town Council. That's, again, more lip service as to the Chair representing Ramsgate Town Council, in the sense that it's the heads of bodies that have been invited. I think there'll be people in this room that know more about this than I do, being TDC-based, that this particular group have no powers. It is literally a group that are coming together as representatives of different bodies to talk about different things. There isn't overarching sort of like voting power or anything like that. So I am suggesting, I mean, rather than telling you, I'm suggesting... So I am suggesting, I mean, rather than telling you, I'm suggesting that it should be the Chair, whoever the Chair is, because obviously this is going to go on for a number of years, be the representative body for Ramsgate Town Council. Do I have any comments on this?
Agreed.
Yes.
I agree that you should be on the board. My understanding of the board of the levelling upwards, because it has a scrutiny aspect to it, it's not just a token shot.
Yes.
So you need to scrutinise how TDC spend the money.
Yes.
On the specific aspects that they're meant to spend the money on.
Yes.
A lot of other things.
Yes.
You are a senior in that role.
Yes.
And also you report back to us.
Yes.
Where they're described as double hatters, per se speaking, but there isn't a TDC representative on it.
Yes.
I think there should be. But there you go, it's a political decision by the MP, in my opinion, and the leader of TDC.
Certainly. And I think, just to say, I mean, like I said, it isn't necessarily going to be me if I'm not the Chair at another time. It is the Chair, whomever the Chair is, obviously. And I think that if the Chair couldn't go, because we did before we we emailed, as I told you in an email, we did clarify with TDC, well, when are the meetings going to be? Can an officer also be present? That's what we'd like. We were told an officer of ours cannot be present. We were told the meetings are during the day. Now, whether that fits into my schedule or not is a different matter. What we would be allowed therefore would be a representative. I think again, rather than selecting a representative now, because you don't know who's free on that day, we look to see whether the Chair can attend and then take it from there. So I'm not suggesting there'd be one other person that would be the representative, but obviously we'd be allowed a representative councillor Huxley, councillor Green.
Councillor Albon phoned me earlier and he said he would like to be the sort of sub, as it were, if you can't as the Chair, make the noises.
Thank you, that's good to know. I'm not sure, again, with councillor, if councillor Alvin, for example, couldn't make that date, then again, it's open to question. So I think it would be more responsible at the time to be able to see who was available. But I take that on board, thank you.
I'm not sure that the deliberations of this board will be confidential on that. In which case you wouldn't be able to report back.
Okay, well, I'd let you know. If it was, then I'd explain to you that I wouldn't be able to do that. I've got councillor Piper, councillor Austin, councillor Huxley.
Thank you Chair. My understanding is the projects have already been agreed prior to the application being made. The scrutiny role is to ensure that the money is spent exactly where it's supposed to be spent. And all of that, the bid projects and everything, it's all in the public domain already. So the only matters might be if there's a malfeasance of some sort that might be confidential. But broadly speaking, I would expect the meetings to be, most of the information's in the public domain already.
Okay, yes, thank you councillor Austin.
I was just going to volunteer to be a substitute as well, Chair, if you require one on the basis of public input in helping buy some of these bids. And I wanted to pick up on the same point that councillor Piper raised, which is that this should be all in the public domain, except where there may be a problem, in which case you would be advised that that would be confidential and not just share that. But we should not be encouraging any other body to resist the paranoia that we've seen in the, of late with regard to external funding. We really need to be encouraging openness and transparency, which is written in various policies but not always followed through by certain other bodies.
Thank you, yes. And I will also state here, sorry, that, I mean, one thing I think that we are as a council disappointed in is that TDC aren't offering us more, you know, seats at the table. Because Ramsgate Town Council needs to be represented, Ramsgate Town Council will. It's not up to Ramsgate Town Council to provide facilities for TDC officers to be up there. But I do think that TDC should have provided, you know, opportunity for TDC officers in Ramsgate to also be on there. That's not Ramsgate Town Council's responsibility, it very much is theirs. However, we will be represented. Councillor Huxley, thank you.
It has, this money has to stay in my family's and everything delivered, I think, by May twenty twenty four. So it's quite a tight timescale. It's a loss of.
Be wasted.
So I can't imagine that you, as the Chair, can't come back to us in a public meeting and tell us what the decisions are. It's a lot of money. The government will come back at the end of the process and say, have you as the board delivered on X, Y and Z, and you're going to have to say yes.
Yes. And quite frankly, if it was, if it was public, I will be reporting. And if it's confidential, I won't be. It's as simple as that, so.
Right, Chair, I would have preferred a double hatter. In fact, we all would have preferred two people. We would just. I sort of disagree because I think the internal workings are that it was the officers that wanted nobody there, and actually, the leader fought hard for additional people to be there. That's my understanding of the situation. And then we all fought hard across political groups to fight for just one more person to be added there, which I think would have made a difference. I think the only reason I prefer a double hatter, and it's no disrespect to anybody here, and it certainly wouldn't, I wouldn't be putting myself forward, is that there are opportunities, or I think there may be opportunities missed where we're in scrutinising process. If we think, if we think we're not happy with things, that it can be, it's got to go through the TDC system. So it's a case of, if something needs to be scrutinised at TDC, trying to find ways of calling that in so that those extra layers of checking are there, and that could be missed by a non-double hatter.
Councillor Green, my, I stand, Ramsgate Town Council were invited to attend, we are attending.
Yeah.
If TDC officers are not invited, that is not Ramsgate Town Council's remit. It is not our responsibility, it is not our problem. I agree with you. I think Ramsgate Town Council, sorry, I beg your pardon, district councils officers from, district councillors, start again, Amory. District councillors from Ramsgate really do need to be at that table. But we are not there to provide the solution to their problem. That is their problem, they should deal with it. That is the, TDC officers, you know, councillors in the room that aren't there, they are the ones that need to be speaking to TDC that this is wrong. I would back you up as the Chair of RTC, I would say, you know, this is wrong. But it is not up to us to provide a double hatter to that situation just because they fail to.
All I'm saying is we could, what's the case, cut your nose off despite your face? It just would maybe be an advantage to have a double hatter there rather than a single hatter. That's all I'm saying.
Make it public, make it known, make sure TDC are aware of it, make sure the public know that this is what TDC have done, do whatever you like. But it is not our problem to solve, you know.
It's our problem. It will be our problem if the money gets wasted. It will be our problem.
Councillor Huxley.
On the board, it's going to be Craig McKenna, the MP, plus Ash Ashby, leader of TDC. So it is a political move. I'm sorry.
Yes, I don't deny that. I don't deny it.
Coming from the central government, the government is conservative.
And it's requiring the MP to be on it.
Yes.
So, you know, it's all skewed in that position.
Absolutely. I can see that clearly. But like I say, there's, you know. Yes.
He has to be there. If it was Labour, then Labour would be there.
Right, so my question to the town clerk is, do we need to vote on this? Or is this something that we could just, sorry, I beg your pardon councillor Green?
I don't know.
Well, that's what he told us. Whether it was or not is a different matter.
That wasn't said at all at the meeting. What was suggested at the meeting was a double hatter.
By the town council? Not, no, by the district council. It's late, it's nine o'clock, I haven't had dinner yet. By the district council, they very, you know, easily thought, well, okay, you can sort our problem out by doing a double hatter. No, I'm sorry, that's not the case. So it's all very well TDC turning around saying, well, you can have a double hatter. No, if they want district councillors there, they invite them along.
But anyway.
Thank you.
Don't really do anything.
Certainly. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I think being here in a meeting, let's finish off with a vote.
Right, all those in favour of the Chair attending?
Yeah.
Thank you. Cheers. Right. Get through this while I'm still coherent. Just to go on to eleven two, basically, I think councillor Heatherington was sort of concerned that she was asking to attend something, put herself forward without giving everybody the opportunity to say whether they would like to or not. We need a representative on this thing. Councillor Heatherington would be more than happy to do it. But of course, she wanted to make sure that was okay with everybody else.
Very okay.
Councillor Green. I'll take that as a personal front, but all right then councillor. I propose councillor Heatherington. Lovely, superb, thank you very much. Right. Financial administration to receive a written report from the town clerk, council credit cards.
My predecessor had a credit card which was cancelled on his departure. Currently, the staff, myself, particularly the town promoter and new technician, are paying for parts of our own debit and credit cards and reclaiming the money back. I would prefer to have the debit cards. Unfortunately, it is only credit cards that our bank account Unity will offer. And so by asking to consider having one credit card for use by myself with up to one thousand pounds, which is my group's standard limit, and a card with a limit of two hundred pounds for use by the town manager and senior technician.
I can allow people to talk on this, obviously, but I do propose that. It seems an absolute necessity. So I can do it. All those in favour? Thank you. Sorry, I didn't want you to not talk. I just thought that that was an obvious one. Thank you. Ramsgate future plan. Considered motion by councillor Green.
Thank you Chair. The National District Council obviously has produced this overarching Ramsgate future plan, that's what, that's our Ramsgate future for the next ten years. It's a bit of a carrot egg, but some of it I believe is good for the town. They have involved Ramsgate Town Council formally, yeah, in the plan. There are various strategies Ramsgate Town Council has been a partner. So what I'm suggesting is in two parts, the first is that we invite a member of TDC's cabinet, like the team, to talk to us about how they view the annual progress. And the other is, you know, I know we've had trouble doing this in the past, but we continually be hopeful and explore with TDC whether they are genuinely interested in their partnership with us. But the two of their proposed projects, the million euro new script, I'm a bit excited.
Thank you. Would anybody like to say anything? Councillor Austin.
I thoroughly support this idea. I do think we should be inviting councillor Pew back to talk to us with. But I do think we should also be pinning councillor Pew down quite specifically in view of the way that he set us down at Ramsgate Market. I do think we need to be, get some quite specific commitments from him that he is, you know, blood or something.
Yes, I agree. Councillor Huxley.
Just so Karen Presson, the tree officer at RTC, has got a plan together for a garden on the missive. I don't know if it's the same thing.
Yeah, I think it is, but my.
Of course he hasn't, can't raise a diamond.
My concern is TDC are good at Ramsgate.
Yes, yes, yes.
I think. Quick on words, low on action.
Given goodwill, we could help them.
Absolutely.
Yes. I therefore propose, as you're proposing this, I'm second this, what you're doing councillor Green. Right, I'll second this. All those in favour? Thank you. Item number fourteen, welfare provision for travellers.
Let me just get it up, it went back.
Chair, would it in fact, this be a good point at which to formally exclude the press and the public? Because some of the traveller families can be recognised and identified. So I just wonder.
In that case, can we vote to exclude the press?
Yes. I don't know whether you wanted a formal proposal.
Formal proposal, do I have a seconder? Thank you, all those in favour? Thank you, we voted to, town clerk, thank you.